Item number two, action of the Senate dated January 5th. So just to clarify in case you saw it, Wendy is going to correct the numbering. Number correctly. All those in favor?
I'm up in here.
Oh, okay.
I can't vote.
Adjustments to the agenda?
I have nothing.
Okay. Number four, public comments. Please state your name and the town that you are from for the record.
William Bend, Bulldog City. Some property was sold on Tiger Hill. I came into the number and asked about that property. It's told it wasn't going to be sold, it was going to be worked out with the property owner. One month later, the property was sold. I was asked to be notified. The property was only listed for three days. Okay? The agent was the seller and the agent was the buyer. I feel this wasn't near long enough to get the potential value out of the property for those people. Because the new rule is the homestead. The town gets it for taxes. They sell it, try to get as much out of it as they can for the person. This gentleman happened to be in a nursing home. So the town getting their taxes. Why wasn't it put out for thirty, sixty days instead of three days? It was signed to the realtor on the twenty ninth. Saturday was the thirtieth. Sunday's the thirty first. And New Year's was the first. And it was sold Thursday on the fifth. I want to know why people weren't notified about it. Especially where I came into this town office and was told by her that it wasn't going to be sold, they were going to work, try to work it out with the owner. I said, "I'm very interested in the property." The property sold for under the asking value when I would have paid probably four times more than that, which isn't fair.
Adam, can you give us an update on this, please?
Sure. So we spoke on the phone as well, you know, prior to the meeting. We, we meaning the town, when it comes to their foreclosed properties, when they're sixty-five and older and it falls into the homestead, we have to follow the town meeting warrant, of course, and then which refers us to the new state law that was put in place, which means we have to be listed with a broker. It doesn't say anything about how long we have to list it with a broker. It doesn't say anything about that process, just that we have to list it with a broker. And then, just like with any property that we would sell, meaning the town, when we listed with a broker, we had offers that came in. Those offers were presented to the board at the next selectman's meeting, and they chose to accept one of those offers.
You got three offers on twelve acres of property in the town of Oxford. Don't you think this was kind of rushed through when, if you would have let it run for thirty days instead of three? This sound, I'm going to tell you honestly, this sounds pretty goddamn crooked, because I asked about buying that property. I came to this town, I came to the office, asked about purchasing it, and was told it's not for sale. They got to work it out with the owner of the property. I wasn't notified and I asked, I said, "If it's going to be put for sale, please let me know, I want to buy it." Said I want to buy it. Was never notified in three days on twelve acres of land in Oxford to go, to be sold for under seventy thousand dollars. This is crooked bullshit, to be honest with you. And if I wasn't interested in the property, I'd never known about it. But for, the property to be listed for three days and you guys to accept one out of three offers, when there should have been ten offers on that property minimum. You got twelve acres that could be developed. It didn't have a chance. And I'm saying this because the guy sitting in the nursing home should have got probably twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollar more than what he got. You guys short-sold it on him. And the idea of this law was to get as much money for the people that are in nursing homes such as himself to help support him. This town did not do that to him. And I'm saying to you as the board, this sucks. If you're going to look out for your people in this town, don't short-sale something. Don't go, "Oh, we're going to do it three days and accept some." At least put a minimum time, say, "We're going to list it for thirty or sixty days." Don't go, "Three days, we're going to take," "Oh, that's close enough."
What did we list it, when did we list it?
And he's not wrong on the dates that we listed. It was only listed for a couple of days, so.
And after those days, there wasn't a end date that we accepted?
Correct. It's like a, it's like a regular real estate listing. You know, so you get an offer within twenty-four hours, you get an offer in twenty-four days.
You can take it.
Right. And you guys accepted it within three days. And it's like you didn't even give it a chance for people to know that it was out there for sale.
So it was listed with the realtor, we've established that, and the realtor did put it out and did receive three bids. When, the way I believe it happened, when he got his three bids that he felt were consistent with the value, then he.
It sold for under the value.
Then.
That was the thing.
Well, if I may interrupt, the, we haven't closed on the property yet, so the sale price hasn't been disclosed.
Well, I heard it was sixty-two thousand. It was asked sixty-nine thousand. And I happened to talk to the realtor.
It was listed for sixty-nine, but the sale price hasn't been disclosed, so.
What I'm saying is.
Should that be public knowledge? I'm starting hearing that, like, if it's, if it's town property, tax-acquired property, should, should the sale price be disclosed or will it be disclosed?
Of course, yeah. It'll be disclosed, it's just that, because it was a, a real estate transaction that was negotiated, it, it does remain private for the privacy of the buyer as well until it's closed. And once it's closed, and then, you know, then it'll be made public, so.
Right, but what I, what I'm saying, isn't, I mean, even to you people, doesn't it go, wait a minute, three days and we accept it a bid? Instead of at least thirty days, people didn't even know it was out there, okay? This is a short sale which shouldn't happen here.
Well, apparently, three people who bid on it knew it was out there because we had three people that bid on it.
In three days. And I was, and like I said, I came to the town, I wanted to know about it because I wanted to buy it, okay? I wanted it, I wanted to build a house.
But just because somebody wants to buy it, we don't just sell to anybody that wants to buy it.
I understand that.
If it wouldn't have been a senior citizen sale like this with, with the new law, then it would have been advertised in the paper according to our town meeting warrant. That didn't happen because this state law trumped how we were going to advertise. And we did go with a realtor, and the realtor did follow the same rules and procedures that he does with all of his other properties that he did.
Well, in that case, then I'm going to say to you, if you give it to a realtor, and this is a realtor's job from what I understand, if I put an offer in on the property and say, "I'm high bid offer at the time," somebody comes in and offers more than I do, doesn't the realtor call that person back, go, "When you have a higher offer, do you want to increase your offer?"
I think that's all part of that.
It didn't happen.
You don't know that.
Yes, I do.
No, you don't.
Do what?
No, you don't, because you wouldn't be making that statement if you did know it.
I do know it, because his buddy was the second offer on it, and nobody called him about raising his offer. So don't tell me I don't know what I'm talking about.
There are other options of bidding and offering amounts of money. So nobody in this room, other than those here at this table who discussed that in executive session, knew what was being offered.
And what I'm saying to you, as a realtor, his job is when he gets an offer, say, "I offered, say, I offered fifty thousand." Well, a guy comes in, offers fifty-two thousand, the realtor should come back to me and say, "Well, you got an offer of fifty-two, do you want to increase yours?" That did not happen, is what I'm saying. This wasn't a normal process.
It actually was, and it's because you.
Well, you can shut me down if you want.
I'm not shutting you down.
But people didn't, that job was not done right.
Well, I'm saying it was.
Well, I'm glad you're the realtor. Because he didn't, he didn't call anybody and say, "The price, somebody offered more, do you want to increase your offer?"
Do you, can I just ask, do we think, as a board, that like, is three days really, doesn't it seem, if we're just being objective here, like, doesn't it seem a little rushed? I mean, we're all, a lot of us are businessmen and women, and you've been in town a long time, I mean, doesn't it seem a little rushed?
Well, no, because, I mean, I know properties that have been listed on a day and they've closed on that day. They've taken the offer over the very first bidder and then the ad was taken down.
But we're doing this for somebody that's in a nursing home, that's going to be living off this money. This is different. This is tax-acquired property on a man that's in a nursing home that's going to live off the money after you guys get your taxes. So I'm saying to the board and this town, try to get as much money out of it for the people.
I think we did.
No, you didn't, because I would have paid ninety thousand dollars for it and it sold for sixty.
But that's after the fact you're saying that.
No, you never give it a chance, is what I'm saying to you.
Okay, does anybody have any comments that they would like to make?
I don't think there's anything you can say, it's his fault.
Well, what I'm saying to the board, why, is there any way that we can put something in for a situation beyond this one, that we're going to list it for a minimum of thirty days for the people that own the property?
What I would say on that is, this is the very first time that the town has sold property under this new law.
Right.
So all of the procedures were followed correctly.
What are the, where are those procedures?
They're state laws.
Is the state law on how to do it? Is there, is there, is there a minimum amount of time?
There's no, it doesn't tell you how to do it. But what I was going to finish saying was, the next time we do it, we can look at longer lengths of time.
Exactly, because this, this is for an elderly person that's ill, he's going to live off this money, okay? I, I mean, the property sold. But my thing, I'm coming to you guys and going, "This was wrong. You didn't try to get as much money out of that man's value of his land so he can continue his life comfortably and pay his bills." You didn't give it that opportunity.
Call it.
But it was handled by a real estate broker. I mean, we can't stipulate to the real estate broker what he's going to do and what he's not going to do. That's how, I mean.
For three days is not enough time for property out there.
My daughter sells homes every day, and once she puts it on the market, if somebody bids on that land or house, it's sold, it's taken off, one day, two days. So that's how the real estate markets work.
I understand that, but these are people sitting in nursing homes or whatever that can't make that decision. And I'm saying to the board, to protect the people of this town, that you know, "Wait a minute, we're not going to go, oh, three days and we're taking an offer." No, well, let's see what we get in thirty days and then we'll make a decision. Alls I'm asking for is give it some time so people get to notice that it's out there. This, there was no time on this. You had December twenty-ninth, that was on a Friday. You had Saturday, Sunday, and Monday was New Year's. So you had Tuesday, Wednesday, and you guys accepted the offer on Thursday.
But we're not the ones that advertised. Once we give it to a broker, it's the broker that advertises the way that, that, that they do. And then when they get people that, once someone sees the ad, then they, they will submit a bid on it.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you can't go, "Oh, we got the best offer we got in three days."
Well, I don't really think that that's how we looked at it. We got a good offer on it and we accepted the best of the three bids, and.
Wouldn't you like to have twelve?
We don't know that.
We don't know?
We don't know if there would have been another offer. Again, I think, I think we're, we're at a stand there, right? At the end of the day, guys and ladies and gentlemen.
We'll just look at.
Yeah, we need to look at.
Procedures that we would look at the second time we go up to do this.
On the other side, it is a little discouraging, like, that, that amount of land sold at that amount of money in, in such a short period of time, it, it, it looks really, it looked bad, in my opinion, it looked bad in a lot of different ways. If I had a property listed, or, you know, I would want my realtor to let me know, "Hey, you know, we've got multiple offers, you know, I think you could do better," or whatever, "Our property could do better." So it, it looks, that's why we're here, it looks bad, and we're disappointed, quite frankly.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
I can just make one comment.
Sure.
One of the things that I, that I find challenging with this, this new state law in regards to this is the fact that it does have the town not follow its bid process. It has the town follow this sale procedure with a broker. You know, because you guys are correct, if this was listed as a town bid, it would usually be advertised for thirty days. The bids would all be open publicly in this room. And if you wanted to offer ninety thousand for it, you wanted to offer a hundred and ten, whoever the highest bidder was is most likely the person that would get it. You know, but this, this process completely takes all of that away from the town, which I think is difficult. I'm not trying to divert any frustration, but contacting your state representative about your thoughts on this wouldn't be a bad thing either.
Okay, so I guess my question to you is, like, Portland says, "Oh, we're going to have a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage." Can't you say, "Oxford's going to say we'll get a list these for thirty days? That's it, tax-acquired property will be listed for thirty days, we take the highest offer."
That's what we do.
Do, on tax-acquired property.
On tax-acquired property, it's in the town meeting, in the town meeting warrant that the people vote on every year, that's in, that's one of our warrant articles, the tax-acquired property. Then the state came on board and said, "Okay, now if there's tax-acquired property from seniors, you will follow this process."
Which I understand.
And that's what we did, and you go to a broker, but you follow the rules of the broker, you don't, you don't list it.
So the broker can say, "Oh, we got the best offer of one day, here we are."
The broker will come back with, with their bids on it when they get them, and if, if we're close or whatever, yes. So this, what, what Adam's trying to say is, the state law, once it trumps to a, a senior citizen.
A homestead, right.
It's different than our foreclosed property, because we list it for thirty days.
Okay, and I understand what you're saying, but as a town, and the, the people that make the rules of this town, the state giving, has given you this rule, but can't you go on top of that, "We are going to say, yes, we are going to list this, homestead through a broker," and go, "The broker," you can't say to a broker, "You have to list this for at least thirty days for us."
You've sold property before too. If you keep rejecting offers, you, you, your offer you received today might be the highest offer, and if you reject that offer, and you, and you sit there and you wait, the rest of the.
Well, if, if I was going to make you say, "I saw this property for thirty days," I'm not going to make an offer of, say, fifty thou, I'm going to go, "No, I'm going to put in my offer eighty, ninety thousand dollars." Okay? If somebody wants to talk me, then they do.
I think that we, did, did you say something?
I was going too, but.
Yeah, I think that we've, there's nothing else that we can say on this. We have a sale pending right now.
Right, but no, I'm talking in the future. Is there any way we can address this for the future for other people this may happen?
Adam will look into that with the town attorney to see if that's something that they can do with that law.
Right, I'm just, I'm, yeah, I missed out on the property, that's not, but I think that that gentleman would have ended up with twenty or thirty thousand dollars more because it didn't get out there to enough people. They could have said, "I want to buy it, I want to," no, they had three offers. I was one, he was another one. That would have been five offers. Unfortunately, it only went for three days and got three offers.
So we'll look into it and, to see how, if there's something that can be added on to that state law to do this, if we have to do it a second time.
Yeah, that would be great, you know, and I'm, I'm saying this for the town people of Oxford, not to get them sold short.
Thank you. Well, we don't sell them short.
Well, I, in this case, I thought he did, but we don't want this to happen in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions and comments?
Flag out in front of the meeting house. Surprise, it's not there. Hasn't been there since voting day. Yeah, I told them to take it down. When I came out on the twenty-sixth, it was a real windy day and it was being held by one of the croms. Couldn't tell what flag it was, or even what color it was. And when I went around the corner on the skeet field on the way to the dump, I said, "Go take that down and replace it." Try the legion, they used it.
Okay.
It didn't happen.
Yeah, myself or Joe will check on it.
Any other comments? Okay. Um, next item, business items, number five point one, renewal liquor application for Ocean Pearl Chinese Restaurant.
I'll go.
Any comments on that discussion? All those in favor, opposed? Thank you. Five point two, renewal liquor application for Honey Badger Bar and Grill.
I'll go.
Discussion, all those approved? Thank you. Five point three, summer recreation proposal. Recreation director is going to speak on this. Kayla.
I didn't even bring a copy of my proposal. I can.
On nine.
All right. So I've kind of put together quite a bit of details on here. We have a very large population, a lot of those, really nowhere for them to go in the summer. So I would like to propose starting a summer rec program, which would be held down at Pismo Beach. We have access to the beach, the fields, we'd be able to utilize the snack shack, and then on bad weather days, we would utilize the rec center and the ice arena. I've had a lot of people asking me for this. It would really be, the program would really pay for itself and then some. This would allow, you know, parents have a more affordable option in the summer. Kiddos are going to be able to get out, they're going to be playing games, going on field trips, hoping to offer swimming lessons, a variety of games. Be for ages five up to twelve years old. So this would be kiddos that have already gone for at least one year of school, whether it be pre-K or kindergarten. Looking, or my plan would to be to start a week after school gets out, and we would run for eight weeks. Looking at three different groups with four staff per group to make sure we have enough staffing. I have put in your, in the proposal, Adam and I had talked about two different prices that we were kind of looking at, a resident rate and a non-resident rate. If we charge, well, total for staffing, for all equipment, a tent so we have some shade down at Pismo, we're looking at roughly sixty-three thousand dollars. If we based this off of a hundred kids total, and we had fifty kids that were residents and we charged six hundred dollars, and we had fifty kids that were non-residents at a hundred and fifty, plus, we would have a resident and non-resident rate for swimming lessons, we're looking at a total of about ninety-four thousand, which would actually be a little bit more with swimming lessons. That is just one session. One session of swimming lessons is three weeks. A lot of these campers or individuals could go two sessions, so those numbers could double. So again, that's been a more than cover the cost of the program. We also talked about a little bit of a lower rate for our residents at four hundred dollars, and one twenty-five for our non-residents. And again, total expenses was just about sixty-three thousand, and that would put us at seventy-four thousand. We would also be running the snack shack that is not utilized at all, and is a perfect building. We would be able to sell drinks, food, you know, lunch, to the, to the campers, but also to the public. It's really a great opportunity that I'd love to see brought here to Oxford, and I'm just looking for your feedback.
Just to clarify, the, the totals you were talking about was the, for residents was four or six hundred, but that was for the whole evening program?
That was for the entire program.
Yeah, and then the hundred and fifty or what have you was for?
Per week.
Per week for non-resident, yep.
Yes, my apology.
But residents could also do the per week program if they wanted, right?
If, if it ended up being less for them, yes. But we wouldn't have them go above the six hundred because they're a resident.
So Kayla, what are you basing your numbers of participation on, fifty residents and fifty non-residents?
We just, we just ran a number, like, if we had a hundred kids, say, we had fifty kids. These were just kind of rough numbers that we went with. Honestly, we may have more non-residents, which is just going to bring in more money for us. I really don't think we would lose money by any means. I've had a lot of people reaching out from various towns that are looking for summer rec. So there was really no rhyme or reason to that fifty kids, we were just kind of basing it off a hundred kids total, which I think we would easily see anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty.
So if, if, when you did registrations, if you had half that amount total, then you'd have to adjust your program?
Yeah, we could, yeah. I, I really think that even with the swimming lessons, the money, like I said, I do have an instructor that I've been speaking with, I'm hoping that's going to come on board. The money that will come in with that will increase. We could definitely adjust it for sure. I'm, I'm really positive in what we need to. I know that's just a hunch, but.
What I mean is, if you have a hundred kids versus fifty kids in the program, a program for a hundred kids is going to cost a lot more. So if you did not get a hundred kids registered for the program, then you would probably have to downsize, depending on the ages of those registered.
And we could, or we could also rotate out staff if we needed to. I get what you mean.
Okay.
What kind of advertising you're going to do on this?
Definitely using Facebook, that's been a big thing. I've been starting a monthly newsletter, but I've also been working with the school a lot. They have been phenomenal. Anything that I have, I send to them, they're going out to all the parents. You know, Adam and I had a great conversation about, again, working with the schools, talking with the teachers, maybe getting some of the teachers as counselors would be phenomenal. So that would be the biggest thing, and I would like to start it, so if we did it and we opened up registrations, it would be opened up to residents before we opened it up to everyone. Obviously, they, they're first.
So do you have a specific timeline as to when you're actually going to start, when you would start advertising the program, and then an end date so you would know how many you would have? Do you have that timeline together?
As soon as I had board approval, it would be advertised.
And when would you estimate that? You would have to know, you would have to have everything finalized to start the program when you want to start it?
So I think when Adam and I look, it'd be towards the end of June that the program would run. I would really love to have, you know, put out for staffing to do, take, to do interviews for staffing, honestly, sooner than later. We're hoping that maybe by the next meeting, you guys would be able to give us an answer if we can run this program or not. And then from there, we're going to start taking in the registrations. And we don't even have to take money at first, we can see what the feedback is, and then during our hiring process. But usually, a month or so before is when I would start meeting with counselors, doing CPR and headspace class, and just doing some training.
So the next question is money. Where are you going to get all the money for your startup?
Well, Adam and I came up with a really great idea, really, Adam, that, kind of putting out incentive out there, that they pay upfront, that they could get half off on their field trips. Field trips are a separate cost. So a lot of this money will come in, and I think the week that we'd start is a week before the new budget starts. So we're really only looking at one week that would essentially be unaccounted for.
So, so then you would be looking at, including this cost, expenses in the budget, beginning July first. This is going to be your budget, this money, to start this program?
Absolutely, yeah. I think that's what we.
Yes.
Staffing people, have you, think you've got a lead on telling them?
Yeah, I don't think it would be an issue at all to get staffing. Like I said, I've had a lot of people reaching out, not only to attend, but, hey, you know, "I'd love to work for the program." And I think. but hey, you know, I'd love to work for the program. And I think, again, reaching out to the teachers would be, uh, great because a lot of them don't have a summer job and this was really kind of a perfect summer job for them. And even taking some of our older high schoolers, um, I've had a lot of high schoolers in the past as my counselors. They do phenomenal. A lot of kids coming back, um, for summer break from college. So I, I don't think staffing would be an issue. I think the only staffing that might be tricky would be swim staff if we don't get them.
So for a program like this, your first year is going to be budgeting costs upfront?
Yep.
And then if it pays for itself, the year after that, you're not going to need these same expenses?
Correct.
Uh, for the first year and then, uh, it's, it's getting it approved in the budget for the expenses you need for the program for year one. And then after that, if it would all be able, providing you have your numbers and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Then it would, um, pay for itself, but not the first year it wouldn't because you'd have to budget it upfront.
Yep. And you know, some of the expenses, you know, are, is equipment, um, you know, playground balls and stuff like that. And really that is equipment that we can use year round, whether, you know, we use it at our rec and then we bring it to the rec center and we're able to utilize some of that. So it can be used year round really. Um, but it's just going to be that one time fee and then just keeping up with what we have.
Dana?
I think this is a very good proposal and an idea. We've talked wanting to improve the rec program. We've put a lot more money into the rec program than we ever used to and the, the kids in town need, need opportunities to do this. Uh, I think some of your numbers are very optimistic. I don't, you can look and see how many people we had in swimming lessons in years past. I don't think it was anywhere near a hundred kids. Uh, we did have difficulties finding lifeguards. Um, I think they could find instructors but not lifeguards. And I like your confidence in the staffing, but it's a problem everywhere you look.
I know, I know.
Not only hiring them but keeping them, um, the summer, so.
Copy.
Didn't you say, uh, you're going to take care of town residents first and open it up to outside?
Yep.
So you might be able to get a lot more. Before it was only the town, but if you open it up to someone else?
I probably, what I would do is, I would recommend that it's opened up, but with the understanding, and it can be worded that way, that town residents will have the first open spots and then as spots are opened to be filled, then you can go with non-residents. That way you don't have to do two advertisements.
Yep.
It's all done up, up front. Just to make that. Uh, Boyd, did you have something?
No, I mean, it's the health thing is what I was thinking could be my bigger issue.
No, I, I agree with Dana. I think it's a program that we, we've talked about doing something that kids, like you said, definitely need something to do during the summer, so, um, I hope, uh, I hope it succeeds.
Did you have a comment?
Well, I was wondering about, uh, helping donations towards the rec center. Has anybody thought of anything like that? I mean, you know, like she brought up the snack shack, maybe somebody could sponsor the snack shack or, you know, there's different things to raise money.
I'm sure those are things she can look down on.
You know, those are things like, I'd be willing to do, you know, like the salvage snack shack or something like that for, say, a thousand dollars for the summer. You know, things like that would-
That is something that we've, you know, we've talked about briefly is, you know, getting the program up and running, um, and then reaching out to the community and having businesses that want to donate and then saving that money for scholarships for the families that don't have it. Um, and I have found in the past, it's very helpful to a lot of the families that don't have the money. Um, but that, absolutely, we're not going to turn away this for help.
Right, well, that, that way it kind of brings in the community, the businesses, the kids.
Right.
Everybody to yell.
Yeah.
Did I understand you correctly that it's six, say, I'm going to take the six hundred because a hundred and fifty a week? I don't know what that comes up to. But anyway, six hundred and then they're going to pay for swim lessons and then they're going to pay for field trips?
Yep, so they can choose if they want to do swimming lessons and they can choose if they want to do the field trips.
Okay, so it-
So it is a choice.
It, yeah, it'll be considered-
But it's actually another thousand dollars.
At least.
Well, that's generally how it is anyways.
It's eight weeks, so, yeah, I mean, you're still making out, I think we broke it down, it ended up being like seventy-five dollars a week.
Yeah, and is it full, Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday would be eight till like three-thirty.
Yeah.
Which is super cheap.
We can't find childcare for that.
But the more-
I pay a hundred and ninety dollars a week.
But the more donate, if you got more donations, you could bring down the cost for the residents. You see what I'm saying?
But we, but we'd have to be able to maintain those donations or you don't want to keep adjusting your price every year.
Right, exactly. That's why I'm saying like, uh, say I, say I said, okay, I'll, I'll give you a thousand dollars for three years. Okay, so now you know you got three grand, a thousand dollars each year. And if you get a bunch of business and do that, then you go, oh, wait a minute, we got twenty-five thousand dollars, so now our price is going down. More people are going to be able, there's not a lot of people who afford six hundred dollars, you know? That's why I'm saying, if you can build up a kitty through your donations, now you bring down your cost for your kids, now you're going to get the hundred kids.
And we could very well have, say we had those donations and we paid for all their field trips.
Right.
You know, there's, there's definitely options.
You're better off lower the cost to get more kids. Giving the opportunity to more kids.
Six hundred dollars is a pretty decent price for eight weeks.
Well, I think it is compared to what I'm aware of, some of the other towns charge and swimming lessons would generally be separate and so would the field trips that, that's separate.
We, we have gone between four hundred and six hundred.
Um, what does the board want to do with this? Do you want to act on this tonight? Do you want to wait until next meeting or what?
I'm okay with it right now.
Boyd, do you want to act on this tonight?
I guess I would maybe like a little more firepower on how we're going to do it, but I mean, I'm not against it. Are you, uh, so this money that she's going to need, you've got someone?
Well, we're going to have to, you know, we'll have to budget for some of it in the next budget cycle. I think one of the things that, what I think would make sense is if we allow her to advertise, that'll, you know, that'll allow us to see how much real actual interest that we get and we need to do that soon. So if we get an actual hundred, hundred and fifty people, uh, that want to sign up for this, then I think that, and those can-
And then if we have the people that sign up for this, then we're going to know what we're going to have to fund the budget.
How are you going to put a, excuse me, how are you going to put a hundred, a hundred or a hundred and fifty kids on Pismo Beach with all the public that's there all summer? I mean, it isn't one of-
So they won't always be at the beach. So we'll be utilizing a baseball field, a softball field. Typically, groups will go down separately. So you won't have all of the kids at the beach at the one time. You might have a group down there.
Well, you can't have them all. You're not going to get a hundred in the-
No, no, no. So once we have all the kids, they're going to be separated into groups.
I'll get that, but I'm, I'm just saying, uh, what's the SAC program? They, they, they had to put them out because if you get that many kids inside the rec center and then when they got them out in the, what you call it out there, it took more staff to water them because you just walk out in the middle of the road. So it, I, you, I, I think you've got to have a little more time with your numbers and-
So one thing that I've found is especially in the rainy days, you have far less attendance. Um, kids will just stay home. But if we had, we have fourteen, probably myself would have fifteen staff. We're going to have some staff inside and some staff in the ice arena if needed. Um, but typically, in the past, I've had a hundred and fifty kids and then on a rain day, I might have fifty. Some days I might have thirty because they just decide, we're going to stay home and take a break because they're exhausted anyways. Those are, those are typically pretty low number of days. But even, even if we have everyone between the rec center and the arena, we do have space or because we have the school to utilize the gym, if that matters a lot, too.
And you know, uh, on most of the days, Monday through Friday, you have some activity booked there during the day.
Yeah.
You're not going to eliminate any of those, right?
I'm not what?
Going to eliminate any of those?
No, 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 nope. Nothing will be eliminated. On those days, we could utilize the school.
Okay. So do you want to, um, one thing would, we could do is give permission to Kayla to advertise for the program to see what kind of, um, feedback she's getting and, uh, what she gets for actually, uh, people registering for the program in the summer and bring that back to us next. Well, even, how long do you think you, I would start advertising. That's what I'd like to see, let's give permission to start advertising.
I would agree. I think, I think there's some more homework that needs to be done, especially knowing, so, I don't remember what days there's activities at the rec center, uh, Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday really are the-
So you're certainly not going to put, not going to be able to put really any kids in there when they're doing their, you know, bingo and bridge and all that stuff. So checking with the school, checking with the school about the availability of the gym on, on, on those days in particular if need be.
In, in the past, what I've done is, um, I just put a blanket request for those eight weeks so we can go on, go in any day. I usually just give you an approval because there's not too much. So that would be done to make sure that any day we could go in there if we needed to.
So if you go, if we give it the okay to go advertise this or whatever we're going to do, we advertise it, is definitely we're going to do it or we're going to, you know, I mean, I do, I mean, I'm just saying if somebody, you know, you get a bunch signed up or you don't get a bunch signed up, but if we make our mind up afterwards, it seems like we ought to have a horse in front of our car before we do that, but.
What would you not if we advertise it? Um, if it's advertised, I mean, it's, uh, we have to meet the threshold and that's, I mean, you don't have to necessarily put what the threshold is, but, you know, when we advertise it, that if the threshold, the number of kids isn't met, then the program won't be able to, you know, finance that.
Well, no, but I mean, I mean, just one person's going to word it that way that if we're looking, looking at this and, you know?
Yeah.
I guess we're at a-
Maybe a number of participants.
So now when I'm taking, so if we're going to advertise and you want me to take registrations, do you want me to charge them a fee? Or how do you want me to do that then in the event that?
I don't think, I don't think we're there yet.
No, right, okay.
You need to put the feelers out on how many, how much interest we have and you clearly know there's interest.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we all know there's some interest. Um, having the interest and people actually come forward and following through, uh, you may have a hundred people interested and only half of them follow through. Um, what, do you have estimated bare minimum number of kids you need in a program to run? Obviously, your numbers will all change. Uh, you won't need as many staff if you have half as many kids.
Right.
It all depends on the number of kids you have.
Essentially, you could really just adjust the cost of everything, make sure that we're being, so if we only had fifty kids, we're not going to need all of our staff.
Right.
Um, and like I said, as far as swimming lessons, we may not find an instructor. That's been the hardest staffing I've had. Um, I had an individual reach out to me that said, hey, I taught swimming lessons for Oxford before. I'll teach them again, but I want thirty dollars an hour. That's not realistic. So, I mean, there's definitely room for the adjustment, but, yeah.
So do you want to, does someone want to make a motion to at least start the registration process?
Well, how you going to, you going to advertise in Oxford first or you going to advertise all the way out? And then just keep track of non-resident and residents?
Correct. So we would just start advertising it all over.
Okay.
And then as people come in, we will know whether they are resident or non-resident.
The answer should say that it's for residents and non-residents with, uh, preferences, you know, going up with Oxford first, however it's for it.
But what do you figure is here with these little fifty?
Yeah, we just went off a, a, we just went off a hundred kids.
I made the motion, we allow the advertising, if you want to. Second.
All votes in favor? Okay. Thank you, Sarah. I'm the next one, too. Next item, five point four, Pismo snack shack.
So this is, uh, directly related to the, uh, capital improvement plan we started discussing last week. Figured where she was going to be here tonight, it would just make sense for her to hit on this as well. Uh, directly related to the summer rec program but also just independently to the snacks, snack shack. Um, Kayla's looked into some improvements she'd like to make as far as equipment and so forth. I've included those in your packet. Just purchases she'd like to be able to make in order to run the snack shack, such as coolers and so forth. But I'll let her describe what she thinks we should have in there and so forth.
Yeah, um, so right now, um, I've gone into the snack shack and it's pretty empty. Um, there's really nothing to cook with, there's nothing, uh, there's, there's really nothing. I know there's a few things that were bought. I think it was a nacho cheese dispenser.
Nacho machine, coffee pot and refrigerator.
Yeah, so those were the only items, um, the only items that are in there. So I've done some research. I've been looking at, um, getting a big refrigerator and this would be utilized not only for summer rec, it's going to be all your baseball, softball games. If you run it even during the summer to the public, um, one just a great opportunity. But having, there is one fridge down there that would certainly not be enough. Um, once you start buying all your, you know, water, game array, if you decide to do soda, um, that right there is going to take up one regular fridge. Um, the tiny freezer is going to be filled up relatively quick. So I did put a couple of different quotes in there, um, for a refrigerator that would be great and solve our drinks in there. Um, and then we can use, utilize the fridges in there now for, you know, our condiments, our cheese, some of the smaller, smaller items. Um, there's a, a couple fry layers in there that I think would be great. We'd be able to offer a pretty good variety of food, um, whether it's french fries, mozzarella sticks, chicken fingers, um, you know, quite a few opportunities there. I think that would be very beneficial to have. Um, there's also a chest freezer. My idea is to go through Cisco. We could ask Polly's if we could put in an order with them. Um, we'd be able to stock up. Um, and again, I think the money that is going to come in from baseball, softball games, from, from the public, um, will certainly offset what we're putting out in costs. Uh, it's a phenomenal building. It's really big compared to snack shacks that I've been into, so that's super exciting. Um, and I'd really love to see utilizing the snack shack and maybe getting some baseball, softball tournaments at Pismo, fields that are very underutilized, so.
So all in, how much are you thinking, this is for Claire, if you can clarify?
Do you remember the number I sent you?
It was like forty-five hundred?
Was it forty-five hundred? Um, and, and there, I took the cheaper, um, quotes in here, but they're all really great equipment that I've used. But I think we would be able to get that money back, uh, pretty easily.
Do you have funding right now available to purchase any of these items?
If we were going to look to, if we were going to look to funding that's available now, we would, we would turn to the, you know, the rec facility's, uh, reserve account is one place that we could turn. But otherwise than that, I don't think, there's certainly not money in the operating budget, so.
But I mean, who's going to run that?
More than likely me. Um, and definitely getting volunteers, you know, during summer rec, um, you could have some help there, whether we're pulling the counselor, they're going to be taking shifts on lunch anyways. Um, but, you know, baseball games, softball games, getting volunteers from, uh, for family members from the team. Um, and I have a pretty good group of individuals that are, um, pretty strong into volunteering, but I think that they would a hundred percent support us in helping.
Any other comments?
I think, I mean, this snack shack's been successful in the past. Again, staffing, you know, I don't, I don't think we want our rec director working seventy hours a week all summer.
Right.
But, you know, it's, it's, uh, some of it's a good investment. I, I don't know that, depending on funding, obviously, how much of it you can get. Uh, you may get some of it this year, some of it next year, uh, and improve each year from there. That's it for me.
How much did you say we had in the rec count?
I'd have to, I'd have to double check. I mean, I know that in the-
Subdivision accounts, you have a lot of this.
I know that in the- I know that in the capital improvement plan, that my suggestion was going to be that this actually come from the fund balance account. But we haven't been able to meet with the auditor yet to get that final number for this year. That should be happening at the beginning of next month. So maybe before a decision is made on the actual funding source, we should meet with the auditor and get, you know, get those final numbers and then maybe it could be from the fund balance account.
But you just said total of five thousand dollars, what the equipment's gonna cost?
Yeah, I think the equipment was about forty-five hundred. And if we were to try and make a decision tonight, I mean, I would turn to the, the rec reserve account. I don't have that total right in front of me at the moment.
Are you looking at gas or electric for the fry leaders?
These ones.
There's no gas down there, is there?
I thought you said, I thought it was all electric.
There's something here. It's an electric fire.
It is? No. We got electricity to take care of it down there. Yep. He'll have to just take quite a bit of electricity, so they take too body.
I think, I think if I remember right, there's, there's two twenty plugs on the wall. They, they, that's what the baseball softball used before, but something you guys ought to think about with fry leaders, you still have an exhaust ancil system in it.
They've got the hood.
Hood or some with ancil system in it, because they shut me down at my shop at the store because I didn't have the ancil system. But every time I went down there, the smoke in the salon was going over exit the building, exit the building, the smoke was coming out the doors, you know, so there's something they gotta think about.
That was the only thing I was thinking of holding off on is fryers right now, you know, deep fryers to cook.
Were you gonna have a grill?
We do have a grill currently that we could use. Two of the fryers are electric and one of these is gas.
I think the last of it, they was cooking outdoors with the home, home ones to the fry leaders.
And whatever, you've got to, you've got to meet the proper specifications, but with fryers, that's.
I knew they was outside of it.
Yeah. There is also a new hot dog steamer down there too. The nacho machine, the coffee pot, the refrigerator and the hot dog steamer, those have just been purchased.
Yeah, there's some left.
Last six months and have never been used.
Yeah.
And the other item that was ordered, but it kept getting back ordered was the popcorn machine. But definitely, I know you're going to need the cooler.
Yeah.
That right there is going to be.
Between the cooler and the freezer.
And the freezer, yeah, because you'll have to buy your food to start the program. And I can tell you that the, having a snack shack down there, operating during the baseball and softball games, was always the number one fundraiser for raising money down there.
I remember when that snack shack first opened, they had everything. It was great. It's like what.
I wasn't involved in that one, but I was involved in the original one that was made down there, built down there.
The difference between the before, which was, it was a private organization that ran that snack shack. They were responsible for everything in there. Now we're shifting to the town being responsible for everything there. So now you're putting liability on the town, which we need to make sure that's all in order, you know, insurances.
Yeah.
Any inspections you might need to serve certain kinds of food, you need different kinds of licenses. That's all gotta be run through, which can be done.
Yeah.
But we, I can remember, even when it was private, we were liable, we had the insurance.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yes, but we're fully liable now. There's not a LLC that, you know, is gonna be on the hook if something gets served undercooked or something like that, so.
I think that that would be a good opportunity to have it open during the day because there's a lot of people that go down there every day, the games and, and then the program. So I, I support it, it's just making sure that we have the money to buy what's needed and making sure that we have all of the licenses that we need to do what needs to be done. Does anyone, do you want to act on this tonight or what do you wanna do with this?
I would think that to give them permission to get a cooler or a freezer or something to start. I know with the fry leaders we couldn't because you're gonna have to have your, but you already have a grill, right? I made the motion that we go ahead and give permission for her to purchase a freezer and a cooler.
You said there was money in the rec budget for capital.
There's money in the facility reserve, yeah.
We're just not sure how much.
I don't have that total in front of me, no, I'm sorry.
Any rough idea, anybody?
And I would say as long as we don't overspend whatever cent they would purchase within the limit of that budget.
Because you're looking at.
Yeah, but if you get your cool and your freezer to start with, then you would be headed in right direction.
I mean, the cooler is twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred, and then the freezer's seven hundred and something.
You're not gonna buy the.
Thirty-two hundred dollars.
The fryers anyway.
Those are good quotes, question is make sure you can get them.
Yeah.
I just ordered a freezer not that long ago and I had it pretty quick. I was impressed.
Yeah, the freezer was nine hundred, eight ninety-nine or ninety-eight.
Yeah, so you're, was that a motion?
Yeah, but I think the one at Lowe's was seven ninety-nine.
Yep. Looks like it comes.
Yeah, it was a motion.
Second that question.
Any further discussion? All votes in favor?
Thank you, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
Five point five, marijuana licensing ordinance amendment discussion. Adam?
So at the last, the last meeting, we had somebody from the public that brought up the idea of making amendments to the marijuana licensing ordinance here in town, specifically to put a cap, I believe she's here with us tonight again. I was asked to put this on the agenda for this meeting tonight, so just in, in preparation for that, I did a little bit of a quick homework. Having talked to the town attorney in the past about some of these topics a little bit already, about what caps would be and grandfathering of old facilities and those kind of things, I put some information in your packets with communications with the town attorney on what some of these ordinance amendments might look like. So specifically it talks about, you know, that we would have no more than X number of marijuana stores licensed in the town. It would talk about, you know, how a waiting list would be handled if, let's just say we have eight in town and nine, nine license applications came in, how we would work through those licenses. The grandfathering of existing stores, as I was saying, allowing or reissuing of licenses if they, for instance, if it changes, you know, ownership or something like the license still, you know, those kind of things. And also the, what happens if a license lapses, meaning that if they don't renew their license because they failed to renew, that then they would fall back on the waitlist and, you know, at the end of the line. So that material is included in your packets. I didn't, you know, I didn't go like full, full on to develop these things. These are just hopefully for talking points so that the board can have that for discussion. Also, the current marijuana license ordinance is in there too.
Well, maybe I got mixed up. I didn't think that we were necessarily drawing it out. I thought she originally asked to put it in the warrant to let the people vote on whether they wanted to limit it or not. Isn't that, am I wrong?
Well, I'm asking you to develop the language so that the citizens can vote. If you choose to not develop the language, then I have to go collect signatures from residents and write it up myself and propose it to you to go into the warrants for June. So I'm asking for you guys to not make me go get two hundred signatures for people saying they would like the opportunity to vote on it in June.
Okay, good. I, I guess I only, probably I wasn't listening just right. I thought she basically wanted to put it before the people.
I do.
So it has to go before the people because it's a town ordinance, what she's, the way I understood what you were asking last meeting was you want this board to put it on the warrant.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Rather than you, or somebody counted the signatures that would be required to get it on the warrant.
But as far as actually what the ordinance would be.
I was gonna leave that to your discretion. I obviously have suggestions, but that was my, my request was that you would develop the language, you would choose the number, and then that would go before the people. Otherwise, I would have to develop the language, collect signatures and then submit it to you to go.
And what if you didn't support the numbers that we put in there, then what do you do? So are you asking us?
I'd have to go, no.
And you asking us to do that, then we would develop the language.
Actually, no, sorry, I'm forgetting, I did ask you to have a public hearing.
Well, there has to, there would have to be anywhere.
And give you the suggestion on what that number should be. And then obviously, we would hope that whatever the citizens have requested, if you find some happy medium in there that would work.
Colleen?
I don't, I'm not in favor of a cap. I think you should let the market decide what the cap is gonna be. You've got, if you have so many businesses, some of them don't make it, then they go out of business. It's just like, do I want a cap on vegetable stands in Oxford? No, because I have a vegetable stand. Same as, do you want a fish truck, can't have a fish truck, where you can't, you know, you're putting a cap on it. I don't agree with the caps. I think let the market decide what's taking place.
So the other question I have is, do we know the number of licenses by categories that we have now? And what I mean by that is, I wanna break, I wanna know a breakdown. How many licenses do we have for medical marijuana stores, for recreational stores, for, what do we have now?
Then you get growth facilities.
And there's, right, so I would like to see a breakdown by category of all the licenses we have. Because I, I know we've approved them, and I know originally before the license, before the ordinance was changed to no cap, there were four here that started out.
And it's for growth facilities.
Those were growth facilities. And so now.
And those are medical, medical growth facilities.
And so now we have a variety of different licenses and different categories. So before we do anything, I think it's important for this board to know what we have approved for licenses by categories, for one thing. So I would like to see that.
I had a question about past precedents on the select board putting on the warrant amendments to the ordinances. So we went through the process. We had a marijuana committee, I think, that put together the ordinance and it was voted on by the town. Do we have other, can anybody think of examples where we can research this on whether the board voted to do this in the past with other ordinances? Or has it always been up to the citizens to gather the petition, gather the signatures and do that work?
Last, last year with the marijuana licensing ordinance was actually an example of doing what you just said, and that is, last year, the manager and the board recognized that there were some shortcomings with the current licensing ordinance. So we developed, we developed it and then you folks put it on.
I, I, I agree with that, that we made some minor adjustments to the ordinance that needed to be made, housekeeping, basically.
But that's not what you're looking.
This is, this is a major change to the, it's, it's something that was already voted on because it was brought up at the town meeting about limiting the number and the people voted it down. So I'm not, I'm not one to go against the people's wishes. And I don't know how long this might take in order for you to get an answer or anybody else, because there's been other people that have asked and complained that there's too many. How long it might take for us to get all of our information to decide whether we're gonna go forward.
What would you, I mean.
Put the article out.
I guess.
So I don't wanna give her or anybody else false hope that we're gonna do this.
Right.
She doesn't start the petition, start gathering signatures, if that's what she wants to do. And then we, you know, when it's, when it's too late, we decide, no, we're not gonna put it on there. I would encourage you, if this is something you wanna do, start your homework because I think it's gonna take us at least a couple meetings to decide whether we're gonna do this or not. I don't think it's gonna be decided tonight by any means.
No, it's not. And what I'll add to it is that, once an ordinance has been voted on by the people, that is the ordinance. I don't support a handful of people that voted against it and didn't like it to then come in and say, I want to have a petition or I want the selectmen to put another ordinance out there, an amendment to change it. So what's going to tell us that is a petition. That's why that petition is available through state law. Because right now, I can name less than five people who have come to this board and stated that they don't support limits. They support having limits, which is opposite of what the ordinance is. But the townspeople voted this ordinance as ordinance without limits. So I guess if there's a handful of people who don't like an ordinance, doesn't matter what it is, then get the signatures of the people that want it changed. And then you bring your, this isn't something we should have to work on. Whoever wants to change the ordinance should get the signatures they need, bring your ordinance language to us and say, right now, we think there should be, I'm just throwing these numbers out there, a cap of five or a cap of ten. It's not us, up to us because we approved this ordinance without any caps on it, and so did the people. So that's my feeling on it.
Can I say that?
Yes.
I think it's fair to add that I think people were slightly misled in the voting because Joel had said, thrown out the number four, and I think people misunderstood that there were four, but they didn't understand the difference between grow, retail, medical. And so I think what's happened, and the feedback I've heard in the community, is we didn't know this is what we were getting by driving down twenty-six and there's fourteen hundred green flags every corner, that this is the only businesses that seem to be opening. So I think that it's not putting the job on you, it's that people voted on something they didn't fully understand, and like you're saying, they didn't understand there were categories. The state regulates the grows, there, you know, I understand that there are differences. So my only request is surrounding retail for Oxford, not growth facilities, not medical, whatever, however those are regulated. So.
What specifically do you want regulated?
The number of retail, because it's because of the level of advertising, like we just approved one down by the old Comedy Place. We just approved one to go in front of Walmart. And we, you know, you've got the Hideaway open not too long ago. You've got, you've got so many, just on twenty-six, and yes, I understand the market can dictate that. But it's more about what does this, how does this affect the look of our community? Like, we're gonna be known for what? Having the most pot stores in Oxford Hills, is that really like what we're wanting? We're wanting to attract quality businesses to this community. We wanna attract families, people, we want people to come build, we want people to do things. So do we want, I'm not saying we get rid of it, because I'm not against it. I'm just saying, I think, is this the look we wanna, do we really want twenty-six to look like? Yeah, you can pretty much from the mechanic falls line all the way up to the Norway line have, you know, ten, twelve options. Like, it's, I just think it looks trashy, to be honest. It's just because of the advertising and the, and I know I, I had asked about, can you limit how many signs? Can you limit like the, you know, exterior blah blah blah? And you can't because you can't put a restriction on one type of business. So, so I'm thinking that, yes, I heard the murmurs, maybe you all haven't. I, I mean, obviously, it's not like people come to these meetings, so I don't think it's a fair assessment to say we've only had five or six people come and complain, they're, you know, and people complain at town meeting. Well, you have what? How many people come to the town meeting? Not many. So I'm just saying, can we give, can we just put that opportunity out there? It'll be voted down. If everybody agrees with Paul D., it's gonna be voted down. So it, you know, it's, it's not a threat to put it on the warrants at all.
But that's why I'm saying if, if there are enough people that want it changed, then let them sign the warrant, let them sign a petition that they think it should be changed. You may or may not get the numbers. And then bring it to us. The other thing too that I'd like to see in addition to the categories, the licensing breakdown, I would like to know the tax dollars that we have taken in from these businesses. I would like to know the tax dollars that we have taken in from these businesses. Because even though those are the only businesses you might see, they're all businesses and they pay taxes.
Right, and I appreciate the tax revenue, obviously.
And we don't have-
It just left that licensing fees too.
And the licensing fees, so all of that.
Are they properly collecting all the licensing fees, or is it called a-
Oh, that all has to be collected when they-
Before they ever get their license, get their license.
Yeah, before they get it.
And we're at the standard competitive rate to other communities and all of that?
Yes.
In fact, we're a little higher.
It's all over the place. It's all over the place, there's some that are higher, there's a lot that are lower.
Some are lower, yeah, yeah.
I think we, I think we might have one that's out of business, because the gas station hasn't had no lights on in five days. I think you might have run out of gas.
I agree with Sharon.
That was before, though.
I encourage you to-
Okay.
There's plenty of people out there. Uh, what I don't wanna see is that it goes too long for us to put it on the warrant, because you're not gonna get a decision, I don't think, from us. It's gonna take a couple meetings' worth of homework, where every day is gonna be valuable on gathering signatures. I don't think gathering 200 signatures is that hard.
Right.
Um, maybe a little tricky for one person, but-
Oh, I got people, don't worry about that.
And draft-
What is the deadline that something has to come before you, a petition has to come before you, to make it in time for the June?
So Adam's gonna have to check those dates.
Yeah, can we connect in the beginning of next week and I can give you a firm date? I don't wanna give you the wrong encoded hours.
Yeah, and I, and I would like those numbers too, that Sharon was asking for, because obviously, if I'm just gonna pick a number out of the sky, it'd be good to know what the actual number is. You know, like I said, I know the planning board just approved one for outside of Walmart, just a couple weeks ago, so I don't even know what number that one was, so.
Yeah, let's connect in the beginning of next week and I can share the position.
It's in the lot out in front, oh, is it 4th Street? It could be, I don't know, somewhere up by Walmart, I thought.
It's hard to tell which ones are retail sales and-
I know the hard way it sells below the border.
I think there's only three retail on, right now.
Yeah, because one-
It doesn't, it looks like there's more than that because of other, you know, you have a medical, you have retail, you have a grow facility, you have lots of places-
Right.
In that stretch, but they're not all retail sales.
Yeah.
That's why I have a breakdown by category.
Okay. And I'll do my homework, I guess, then, on what the state rules are as far as, you know. Can we have 50 grows in one town? I don't even know, plus, you know, it's a lot of medical, so.
Does she have a copy of the ordinance?
Medical.
Was that?
I think you'll pay for it, no?
She can have this one if she wants to.
So you can see what the actual ordinance looks like, if you haven't seen it.
Adam, I think, when it comes to medical, we don't control it.
We don't, right.
Right, you don't control medical.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Forgive if there's some scratches in there.
Oh, gosh, no problem.
Item 5.6, approve accept state of Maine forestry grant fire department for $2,497.50.
Shouldn't do that. Negative.
Discussion?
Question? This is a matching grant, correct?
Correct.
And we have the money in the budget to match that?
Yes.
Other questions? All those in favor? Posed? Thank you. 5.1, yes, 5.7 grant, opportunity discussion.
Alright, so I sent out an email to the, to the board the other day, so, to each of the board members, just to get this out there. It's an opportunity, um, it's a zero-match grant for up to $50,000 for community resilience partnership. It's, uh, these, these grant opportunities, it is very focused on like hazard mitigation and climate-related hazards and so forth. But it's my understanding from looking at this, this information, it can be used for, you know, preventing washouts, or making road improvements, or, you know, anything you can think of that would fall under hazard mitigation. In order to be eligible for these grants, however, we have to do a self-assessment, that's, I don't wanna call it a simple process, but that's a process that, uh, that can be, you know, that we can do, that doesn't need to involve the board necessarily. But where it gets more interesting, if you will, is we have to have a, a community engagement meeting to talk about priorities. So not a public hearing per se, but just a public session. And, um, there is a, a nonprofit that has been working, working with other towns as well, that's been tasked by the, by the state of Maine to help with this. And, um, Scott Vaughn from Ecological Based Economy out of Norway is the one who's spearheading that. So, before I, I turned to him and say, "Yes, we're interested in doing this," I wanted to make sure I got the board's input on this particular item. So if we have a community engagement, allow for that community feedback, and then the board wants to continue forward, the selectmen are gonna have to consider adopting what's called the municipal resolution, which I've included a copy of in here. And it just basically, basically hits on what the priorities of this are. You know, it's, uh, community resilience against a lot of these, uh, different challenges that, uh, you know, we may be facing for flooding, or rainstorms, ice jams, droughts, and so forth. I also feel like this money might be able to be used towards some dam improvements as well, where that is also related to hazard mitigation.
Probably use some dam money.
Is the board comfortable with me continuing to move forward with this?
Did you read the optional printed statements in that?
That's why we're having this conversation. Because I, I did, I did read those statements, and I thought the board-
Alabama Maine is warming 99% faster than all the oceans around Maine, the world. I'm sorry, go ahead. We're, uh-
Go get him now.
Reduce fleet, turn your fleet to electric. How's that gonna work?
The workman. These are all just samples, and then, nothing, nothing in that last-
But this is a grand machine to speak. These are the statements, if you go along with this. These are the statements, if you have to, I know Scott.
That's the screen angle, that, that's what we have to list out there, as, as our state.
And that's why-
So is there any cost to us, is there a cost? Do we have to pay this gentleman to come down here and hold this?
Nope.
Public meeting, or?
Yeah, it's a complete no-match grant. He is being tasked by the state to facilitate these things, so.
And I mean, the state of Maine, four-year climate action plan. Maine won't wait, seek to put Maine on the trajectory to decrease gas, greenhouse gases. Emission 45% by 2030, 80% by 2050? It's not for us to put our board 10 years from now, trying to tell them what to do.
No, that's what we have the state legislature for.
And I can't, I can't support, I mean, I don't support-
I don't support.
The majority what's in this page, anyway. I mean, 23-
That last page has to be included in this, or this is-
That's your statement.
Language that they have already in other places.
That's your statement.
And this is a, this is a sample, but-
Sample, municipal resolution.
That's your statement.
We, you, you have a statement for him, and I'm sure we all probably do, this is required. If this is what they require-
It's nice to give $50,000.
Then he probably doesn't need to waste his time, but. That's why we're, that's why we're having-
He's got a little three on that list and be pretty comfortable with it. Investing in energy efficiency and weather relation improvement on municipal buildings.
Quite.
God knows we gotta do that, I hate party here, he comes there.
But I don't agree that transitioning municipal vehicles to electric vehicles.
I'm, I'm willing to listen to what the guy has to say, as long as there's no cost to us. And then we can decide if this language and this whole bag coach is required, he's wasting his time.
So would you like me to have him come, this Scott Vaughn, come to a meeting and discuss this more directly?
Would extend the invitation.
Okay, I'll do that.
It'd be wasting my time.
Yeah, why don't you ask him first if that last page is-
I'm not getting him with the legislature, though.
They just skip the whole meeting.
In 10 years from now, the state is gonna force feed a lot of this on us anyway.
Well, it's what the government's trying to do right now, anyway.
For the federal government, so.
I would ask him if that back-
That's the process of it.
Page has to be included in our resolution, everything in there. And, who said it?
If it's a yes, then it's-
If it's a yes, then I will vote no.
I will vote no as well, and, yeah, all that has to be included.
If it all has to be included.
We'll, we'll write our own resolution.
I'd be interested to see that.
There's some good things in there, I, I would agree that, and there's a lot that's not.
So just to be clear-
It's a working copy.
Just to be clear.
Just to be clear, I'm not saying I support anything that's in that resolution. I'm just saying that I want you guys to have the opportunity to.
Alright, and we'll all tell him no if that's what he comes down here and says.
I will, uh, find him to show.
Number six, department head report, transfer station definitely.
Hi there.
Hi.
Everything's going well. We got our new doors in, I'm happy with them, they work very fine. I got the chipper guy in here this week, he's been there since last Friday, so he's, he's put a whole week in chipping wood, so we're gonna get a good chunk of money out of that, I think they've taken like 20 loads out, so. It averaged $35, $40 a load, but I mean, hey, it's all money that we didn't have before. Next week, I got a load of plastic going out, and we're getting $1,260 a ton for it, and I think we got around 11,000 pound, 11 tons, so. That'll be another big fat check coming in, it'll be $13,000 to $14,000. And then, on the update on our charging all our different fees, just the month of November, we took in $6,066 in, in feed money. So that tells you what was taken in for free, besides the demo. The other ones were averaged around $4,000, there's like an extra $2,000 we took in. As we put our mattresses up to $5, Almighty charged us 10 to get rid of them. They had never charged before, but then they all of a sudden, you know, they see we was charging, so. But, I went through the loopholes of our main energy to waste where our trash goes, and we could haul in all our bulky waste, mattresses and all that, $86 a ton. So I switched everything there, but it's fun trying to get Almighty to haul it now. And they're playing the game, you know, you call them and it take them a week to get a, get a container empty. But they went up to $125 a ton, plus the mattress fees, plus a 10% fuel charge. So my budget is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be looking like this. The equipment budget is way, is gonna be way over this year, because we had to replace the forward and reverse in Brian's tractor. We put over $6,000 in our other tractor. And then we had to have the compacted trailer, the older one, we put $6,000 into welding that to get it to pass our inspection. We cannot make it one week on one trailer now. We've been filming the trailer every two days, and it's just hard to try to get them to come and move it, so. Everything's going well, though. Townspeople are happy, they're not complaining about the fees. I think Jim's brought two things in that they found inside the road, which you're gonna find anyway. But, as far as anything else, I hope everybody comes around, and I, I've seen a few of there, and see how, you know, it's, it's clean, it's, it isn't a, isn't a bookstore. I know I've had a lot of people, you know, you guys voted against not having, take anything, but a lot of people that, and that would be the, I told the petition thing again. If they wanna, they wanna petition you guys to change that, they're more than welcome to do it. But, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that gets thrown away that people could use. They come in and look at you and say, "Can we set that on?" It wasn't hard, but, that's where we're at.
Questions left to add, anybody?
Man, it was good down there. Um, I went down, it was past weekend, the, the mixed paper was starting to overflow, and I, when I got down, I went to the regular place. I told Ed and he drove up there, and by the time he got there, it was already, you know, empty.
Already, already gone.
So he was probably getting a tractor when I went through.
Thank you, Ed.
Yes, thank you.
Town manager's report, capital improvements and discussion continuing.
Sure, so, this is a, you know, it, it's gonna be light, just because again, we're waiting on those reports from the auditor, for, for funding sources and so forth. But, I just wanted to throw out there, does the board have any questions about the plan that I put out there? I know it's a little bit of a, a little bit aggressive. I did, um, I did specifically just wanna mention to the board, I had questions about the road projects. The two roads that I was looking at, or was going to propose, was Winemore Road and Number Six Road. Those are the two that made up that number there, the 400,000. That's a shim and overlay for both. I did have a pretty good conversation with Rob Prue, the engineer. Yes, those roads do need some more in-depth work, but at the same time, we've got a lot of miles that need to, need some attention. And shim and overlay with, and Rob Prue said he'd be willing to talk to the board more about its methods here. Shim and overlay would get us to the point where we can start making these roads more comfortable, more passable, and so forth, so. I don't know if there's other things on there that the board wanted to discuss. I know another thing I got asked questions about was the fire vehicle amount, the 250,000 for that. I'd be interested to hear the board's feedback on that. I, I feel like that we do need to start saving for that next fire truck, or as I said at the last meeting, maybe there's a used fire truck, or a piece of apparatus that falls within that bracket, maybe there's not. Maybe we put 250, 250,000 aside this year, and we put an additional 250 next year, and that gives us enough to buy a brand-new engine, or that allows us to buy two pieces of used equipment. But I, I do need, I do think we need to address that, address that issue, so. Let me ramble on, is there any other pieces on here that the board wanted to discuss, or?
I think a lot, I mean, as you know, it's gonna hinge on the auditor and the fund balance, and, you know, nobody wants to commit to anything that, without knowing the numbers yet, so.
And he does apologize if, if he couldn't be here today, except personally.
It happens.
Any other questions right now? What's next?
Question, she mentioned it, thankfully, made me think of signs. So we have assigned ordinance for businesses. Could we get a copy of that, because some of them signs on Route 26 are awful bright, blinding bright. Depending on what, what they're showing, and they, they change the digital LED. One across from the Speedway, um, it's very bright. Especially when it changes to that white background, I don't even know what it says. It's so bright, you can't really look at it at night, because it'll blind it. If we could get-
Keep your eyes on the road.
If we could get, somebody to make sure those are being, the ordinance is being followed. I know there's, there's a size limit, I wanna say there is a-
There's usually-
Amount of light that it can put off, um, in there.
I think it's the state, I know-
We have an ordinance too, though, I know we do. I don't know if it describes the light level.
There's a state law too, because I remember when I had my little vegetable stand down across from the Big Apple, I put out a regular, with an arrow, the lights on it, blinking, and the state stopped by and told me I couldn't have blinking lights.
Fussy about blinking. Just making, making sure, I don't know if it's a code enforcement thing, probably would be code enforcement-
I think it is code enforcement.
To make sure that they are following the rules.
He does have a thing, because I put him sign up, and I, I got, I got it from him before that I had, I can't decide it for you right now.
They can have a fairly big sign too, I wanna say it's four by eight.
Yeah.
I'll forward, I'll forward the side ordinance and all of that.
And that, even if it means just turning the light down a little bit, and maybe they would, they would realize, maybe they don't realize how bright it is at night sometimes.
That's a, I mean, that's a setting in there, 'cause like, the one on the safety building, that, at 5 o'clock, it didn't sit 40%, so, bright night, so.
And that might be something that the code enforcement officer can, you know, pick a project to do, to, to make sure that all of the signs and banners and lights and everything are consistent with our ordinance and the state ordinance.
Sure. Thank you.
Other items?
I've got a small personal issue with, sense of duty. This last week, there's been a few things taking place up there that, I get two grandkids going to school there. And, there was a certain individual that came in on a Thursday, and he came through with the kids. And there was a certain individual that came in on a Thursday and he came through with the kids. You knew about it. And it kinda bothered me, he had a knife, everything else was the teacher. And they asked him to leave the property and said he couldn't come back anymore. And then a woman threatens to smash in the side of the building because nobody's busing her kid, right? These are things that kinda bother me a little bit with this area, what's happened? And I think, you know, we, Sluckman should make a statement to school board, things are gonna start, people are gonna start paying attention. And it's gonna be more recourse, instead of just asking the kid to leave the grounds and not come back. Especially when my granddaughter shows me on Instagram him playing with guns. Something's gonna happen, and I don't want it to happen to my grandkids.
I have a granddaughter in that same school that that happened in. And we found out, her mother actually found out after everything had happened and parents hadn't even been notified.
The teachers had union meeting and they weren't even told, even after what they did.
So those things, parents have to be notified when these things happen. I think there's a lot going on in the public school in our area right now that, I don't know what's going on, to be true, I really don't. And I don't like to criticize what other board members are doing. But I think, to me, it's dysfunctional.
No communication.
Nobody's paying attention and who's running the show up there?
Nobody, nobody would stand up and take chairman of it.
No, I didn't today, I don't blame him, I wouldn't be chairman either.
Maybe nobody even wants it, nobody raised a hand.
But when you have somebody that walks right in.
With the kids.
With the kids and they know I'm gonna pass students.
In the school, I understand.
So that's not right and what could he have done with that knife before?
Probably shouldn't say this, but.
He shouldn't, probably, you're right, he shouldn't.
I'm not going to. We put his mother on the school board.
We didn't?
I didn't.
I'll say we didn't. You wanna say it on the public? Nobody knew, one, this happened after that incident.
But I'm just saying.
And you wouldn't even be able to know that that's his mother.
I know, but I do, because my kids went to school.
So, something that, that I've seen happen in the past, and maybe we could do it here, is we could invite the superintendent and/or the chair of the school board, I heard what you said, to come, come and address the board. Is that something you publicly would like to do and put that out there?
I think we've done that, the superintendent was gonna come once before and.
It was just before she got fired.
Yeah. Certain would love to, you know, that school board, I don't know if they're gonna vote on who the permanent superintendent's gonna be in the next six months, but you're gonna have more turnover on that school board. Because anybody that just got appointed, at least in this town or Paris, I think the former chair is not gonna run for reelection, you're gonna have some turnover on that school board, Jill. Some good, some bad, probably. It's, the voters vote in the school board, just like they vote in this board. I'm, for one, not real comfortable appointing somebody to a board that should be elected, but that's what the law says. And I felt that it was more important that we appoint somebody to have a voice for the citizens of Oxford than to leave that seat anymore.
So would you like?
I hope I didn't owe them a can of worms.
So would you like me to invite at least the acting superintendent?
I think we should. I mean, we should have some answers, we should, there's gotta be some communication. Especially with teachers and the superintendent's or principal's office. I mean, when you have teachers not knowing what's taking place, that's not right.
Same way with your school buses though, I mean, in your budget, you're paying for school buses with kids, kids picked up and you go over to the elementary school at three o'clock and you've got a line all the way down to Rexona. Parents picking up their kids because there's no buses.
Yeah.
I mean, come on.
Well, that's up in Norway, Main Street, Norway.
Every school.
Pull, pull down to the Oxford Elementary about Quarter Three and see what you say. It's a line of traffic.
I will say, if I, if I may, that I was, I was very happy to hear, I talked to the police chief here in town and he's been communicating with the parish police, you know, the other police chiefs as well, and they've been talking about this exact issue and other related issues. So they are communicating about it and they are aware, so was happy to hear that.
Although PDs can be in issue, hence the fire in the cafe up there.
What was that?
Well, they had a fire in the cafe up to the high school and the PD, so, I don't know, I saw it. Anyway, they didn't, they did, the fire alarm system went off, they didn't evacuate the school, they're just gonna say that, we will not evacuate.
Yeah, I heard that too.
Do you wanna? Well, I said, I think you sent the wrong message, because I'm pretty sure the pilot was off, he probably got it. If for nothing else, you just checked it off as you drove for the quarter. But staying in, staying in school during an active real fire in the building, probably not a good idea.
Again, not a, not a select board issue, but shows that there's issues in, in the school policies and who's running them.
Well, I think another issue in high school, since you guys are all, Sharon, how many bathrooms are in that high school and why is only one opened? And I probably don't wanna say right here why they're only keeping one open, so kids from one end of that school have to walk to the other end of the school to go to the bathroom because of what's going on in the bathroom, so they're only keeping one bathroom on and open in the high school. So that tells you right there that there's a big problem in the high school. If they're only gonna let one bathroom be open because they know what's going on in the other bathrooms, why isn't there some type of security?
Because there isn't any, and I'm, I'm not against the summer program, but all those kids and all those problems are gonna come with them down on the beach. And how many portable toilets can we afford to put on Kismar Beach?
Alright, any selected items anymore?
Oh, and I know they're gonna be busy in the next few days, but I hit that damn pothole every frigging time.
Right on the end.
Yes.
Yes.
It's a register speed bump.
I was gonna say, it must have been. I hit that one more.
It's been such a movie, it's like, come on, no ending.
Um, nine, sign warrants.
I know the pothole's there, so avoid it.
I forget.
I'm prepared to leave.
Right.
That's all, darling.
I suppose you did it.
No, I didn't, I haven't.
I know where it is, I don't think I can.
Well, every day.
In the daylight.
Jimmy's dog.
That's, that's right, I forgot, parties are repaired, but tomorrow won't be, because hopefully it's snow.
They fill the bed with snow. They're filling it with snow. Do we all, right across the park side is that way? Do we all right up to the road, across the park side, right? I know that Forty-Eight Acres or whatever, is that, is that go right to there?
I don't think it goes all the way.
Can you call him before you tell him to say all that stuff?
I'm not sure.
Right across the park side is a big tree.
Oh, are you talking about the tree, the people's house?
I told you that the other night.
In front of someone's house, there's four trees.
No, that's, that's the other one.
I might even choose that.
No, this is up, this is right across the park side, it's one that's fallen.
It's about landing the road, the next big windstorm, there's gonna be two trees next to it.
Yeah, that's, that's a funny, that little small house.
That one little house next to Maine drilling, road selling, there's a house, there's four trees, one fell over. But there's one that is leaning towards the road and it's only being supported by the branches of the next tree. In the next windstorm, we could have somebody, and I was gonna ask a question, like, does it's private property, but can the town take care of it because someone can get literally killed?
Well, if thirty of the trees on, and the forty ones, you feel. If the town is on, in the town's right of way, it can, but if it's hanging in the road, it can't do.
I mean, it's just, it's a huge, if the roots are coming out, it's not gonna take much.
You can see the veraport.
I drive by and I'm like, make sure it's not coming down.
The other, the other one up across the park side, I was hoping, that's just something that's for us.
I know, it's pretty scary up there.
Number ten.
Negative.
Paul Wilson Baker, where it's at.
There is, one of Robinson's. Scotty called the ball.
A branch broke off, it hit the house.
Yeah, it's like leaning in their yard.
It got it off the house.
The other one's just there, you know, I'm sure they just can't afford to cover, have it taken down or they can't, or a tree died. Right, but I'm sort of like, yeah, we're gonna have to, if that leaves a car, it's gonna have a bigger problem. Well, never mind, go. Well, that's, that's my point on the town. Wait, I, I mean, when you're driving. Well, I look at that one.
Wendy was all.
You guys like sketchy.
Oh, I do.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry.